All right, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. This is the May 25th meeting of the Carlisle Select Board. Let me introduce the members. I'm Alan Lewis, the Chair of the Select Board, Barney Arnold, the Vice Chair, David Modell, the Clerk, Kate Reed, the Member. And welcome, everybody. We will start by reading the agenda, the draft agenda. We'll start with community input. Please, if you have community input, limit your comments to five minutes. Then the LEPC update with changes to Town Hall hours. Old Home Day update by Niles Kokenhour. I see he's here. Thank you. Good evening, Niles. Welcome. Dear Management Study Presentation by Sarah Carvallo from Boston University. Welcome, Sarah. Carlisle Energy Task Force update on the charging stations at the Carlisle Public School. 8:30 Request for Select Board Support of the 2021 Open Space and Recreation Planning OS and RP Committee. 8:45 Discussion of Curve Street Dam with Conservation Commission. 9:15 Preparations for the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. 9:30 The Town Administrators Report. 9:40 Liaison Reports. 9:55 Approval of Minutes and Warrants. And 10 o'clock is our projected adjournment. So what we will start with, is there any community input this evening? Hearing none. We'll move on to the LEPC update. Chief Fisher.
Thank you very much. Good evening, all. Two things from LEPC. The first, for those who have been following it, Carlisle joined seven other communities in an application to the state to provide vaccination site. Of course, that went on for months and months and months. And then finally, of course, two weeks ago, that was approved. And without sounding a little bit cynical, Linda Fantasia said probably too little, too late. She did represent our Board of Health and conquered for a clinic they had there for young people last week. They had half as many people as they thought they were going to have. And in brief, the eight communities got together yesterday and have opted not to have the clinic enact in the public clinic where the eight communities were joined. For now, they're going to keep their group alive in case something changes and have let the state know that they would like to keep the application active and be eligible to apply for vaccine should anything change. But I know that those who are on LEPC probably got Linda's email today and I actually saw her in Town Hall to talk a little more about this. So it looks like we're not going to be joining for now. And the second thing I ask is that the LEPC met last week and the LEPC does have a recommendation to the Select Board. Is it okay if I read that?
Please do.
So the LEPC requests the Select Board's support adopting the latest state and CDC guidelines for lifting restrictions from the COVID-19 responses beginning May 29, 2021. So in essence, it's Saturday. The changes in Carlisle include, number one, Town Hall will adopt their normal summer schedule starting June 1st, including, A, appointments for visiting town offices are no longer required. The hours of operation are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Tuesdays, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., or by appointment, if you need another time. Masks are required for visitors and employees that are not vaccinated. So that's Town Hall. Private businesses may require more restrictive procedures or mandates. For example, they might require all customers to wear masks. Third, please refer to the websites of the Carlisle School and Carlisle Library for guidance on their policies and procedures. I talked to both Superintendent O'Shea and Martha, our librarian today at both locations, and both do have slightly different policies, but are obviously looking forward to moving forward. Entities wishing to hold events after May 29th, like my friend Niles Kokenhour here from Old Home Days, do not need to file safety plans with the Board of Health. So again, if your event's after May 29th, you do not need to file a safety plan with the Carlisle Board of Health. And finally, the State of Emergency in Massachusetts officially runs until June 15, 2021. The governor did release some other guidelines today, but I took a look at those and they really have more to do with, you know, specific localities and really kind of small things that I don't think many or any apply to Carlisle that I could see. I don't know if anybody else on LEPC saw those today. So that's really my report. If anybody has any questions. Oh, and I do ask that the Select Board adopt the guidelines.
Thank you, Chief Fisher. Any questions from the Board? I think you were all at the meeting, except for David.
Yeah. Well, I'm the one that said too little, too late, in case people thought it was too snide for something that Linda might say, because she didn't say it.
We all thought it.
I said it.
Well, there's a surprise. All right, I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the LEPC for Town Hall.
I move that we accept the recommendations from the LEPC regarding the new Town Hall hours and the other points as included in Chief Fisher's report.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote?
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What do I?
We aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks a million.
All right, Old Home Day update. Colonel Kokenhour.
Hello, sir. Welcome. Greetings to the entire Board. So from the Old Home Day Committee, wanted to pass on, first, appreciate the Board's support. We have submitted a letter, as we've done in previous years, requesting the use of certain town properties. You have that possession. Please, the Board will grant that approval and didn't want to take anything for granted this year as well. To give an update, the Old Home Day Committee decided, you know, before a lot of the state requirements came out and updates have, you know, been flowing quickly, that we would hold on to Old Home Day in two parts. The first part in the traditional time on June 26th and the second later in the fall, targeting September 25th. The idea there being, you know, with the uncertainty of what would be in front of us as, you know, events has actually proved out, we weren't sure what we'd be allowed to do or not allowed to do, both by the state and what that would then flow down to the town. And we thought this gave us the greatest flexibility to be able to do something meaningful for the town. So for this coming June, we also contacted the LEPC and met recently with the Board of Health back when we were assuming we were going to be filing a safety plan, walked through our initial thoughts and, you know, the events that we were considering for that timeframe, which would include a road race, a country fair. We'd be doing kids' games down on Spalding Field with the idea that it gives us, in all of these venues, a little greater ability to space out people and create a social distancing opportunity. We would also probably have a cake decorating and pie baking contest, as we've done in years past. Some of the events we would not be doing in June for one reason or another, but would hope to be able to bring into September would include the Arts and Crafts Show, as well as the Great Parade. We may do a smaller parade in June, but trying to get floats and neighborhoods and everybody involved, we would target that for the September timeframe. And at the time, and probably still the case, the Fireman's BBQ was looking to be very difficult to try to do in the June timeframe. But the committee that puts that on was supportive of considering something happening in September. We're still moving forward with that, you know, and that plan is still holding fairly steady. I have also heard from the Congregational Church, they are going to try to do a pancake breakfast of some form. They would certainly work with the Board of Health, as they always do, with any kind of food, you know, issuance at that point. So that's where we are. We're continuing to work through the logistic details of where we sit. We do realize that there is going to be varying levels of risk tolerance within the town, you know, even with the state guidelines. And so you may see things that may not be required, but we feel would be, you know, supported and make people feel more comfortable. And that is, you know, one of our objectives of Old Home Day is to bring out and provide a venue for a lot of the town to be able to participate in. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none.
That it's happening. Just, I complimented one, your committee in moving ahead, even under these uncertain, you know, times. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I mean, the innovation that you've shown, the, you know, given that we didn't know what was going to happen in the timeframe, splitting it was an appropriate thing to do at the time and probably still a good thing. We get to celebrate twice this year instead of not at all. So we thank you and your committee. I know you folks work really, really hard on this and we look forward to participating. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving ahead. Dear Management Study Presentation by Sarah Carvallo of BU Department of Earth and the Environment. Ms. Carvallo.
Hi, everyone. So a couple of other members of my team are going to be joining us. I told them 7:25, so they might sort of trickle in in the next few minutes. So I hope that's all right. If you see some strange folks in the waiting room, that's who is coming in. And again, I just want to thank you so much for inviting us here today. We're really excited to talk about this project. Did everyone hear me all right?
Yes, you're fine.
Great. Alrighty. So really, like I said, we're really excited to share this research and a proposal for potential collaboration with Carlisle today. To get started, my name is Sarah Carvallo. I'm a postdoc in the Department of Earth and Environment at Boston University and I'm part of the research team behind our project, Managing Suburban Wilds. And I'll introduce the rest of the team in a minute, hopefully, as they trickle in. But first, I'd like to give a brief overview of our project and our project goals. So we're an interdisciplinary team, which includes social scientists like myself, biologists and ecologists, working to explore the social and environmental dynamics of wildlife in urban and suburban communities in the Northeast. And in particular, we're focusing on Massachusetts and New York in our research. And so as you probably all know, whitetail deer are an increasingly common sight in the streets and backyards of communities across Massachusetts and New York. And several factors have really contributed to these, to the growth of these populations, including the lack of predators, such as wolves and coyotes, as well as the sort of abundant food supplies in suburban yards, including hostas and a lot of the other lovely spring foliage that we have growing right now. And so the growing numbers of deer in urban and suburban communities have been met with a lot of interest, but also a lot of concern from both residents and town officials. And so our research project really seeks to gather information to better understand deer populations and the, and factors affecting their presence in the suburbs. So in places like Carlisle and also other towns across the Northeast. And so we're interested in the following questions that I have on the screen here. So what's driving deer population changes? And then how are communities responding to these changes? And so we plan to conduct case study research in 11 towns across Massachusetts, New York. And today, we'd like to ask the town of Carlisle to be one of those case study towns and gauge your interest in helping out with our research project. So our work will provide the town with information for residents and also town officials about the impacts of deer, and it can support efforts to assess the presence and impacts of whitetail deer in the town, as well as the evaluation of various options for management of deer. And our research will take, is funded by the National Science Foundation for a period of three years. And so what I'd like to do now is just take a brief moment to introduce the different team members, as well as provide an overview of the research activities we're interested in conducting in Carlisle. And then I'll discuss some project outcomes and how we'd like to work with the town. And of course, feel free to stop me at any moment with any questions. This whole presentation is about 10 minutes long, so then we'll have lots of time to chat afterwards. Right, so as I mentioned, I am just one of many members of the Suburban Wilds team. And here are some of the other members of my team who shall be joining us tonight, hopefully pretty soon, to answer any questions you might have about the project. So in the interest of time, and since a lot of them aren't here yet, I'll go ahead and just briefly describe our three subteams. So first, we have the Deer Ecology Team, led by Tim Van Dealen and Jamie Gothlitch out of the University of Wisconsin at Madison. They'll be in charge of a lot of the ecological fieldwork. And Jamie's actually in Massachusetts, getting ready to do some fieldwork in other towns. Then we have the Social Science Team, which is out of Boston University, as well as Texas A&amp;M University, and will be in charge of a lot of the work, talking with different folks in towns about their perspectives on deer and deer management. As well as finally, the Modeling Team out of Colorado State University, which will be taking all of our different data from our research activities and putting them into a model, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a moment. So like I mentioned, our project will be conducted over three years and collect data on deer activities, vegetation changes, and as well as perspectives of those in the town about deer and their concerns. And so I'll talk about each of these three components in turn. But like I mentioned, together, these efforts will contribute, these data will contribute to modeling efforts to understand the complexity of suburban deer population changes and the impacts that these changes might have on residents and the environment in suburban spaces. So first, turning to deer population monitoring. It's largely impossible to count all the deer in a certain area, but what we can do is actually estimate their presence on the landscape, based on their visibility and also based on their impacts to the local ecosystem. So in each case study town, we've selected five areas to measure deer populations and these, and deer populations and their impacts. And these sites have been selected based on a variety of different characteristics, including forest cover and land use. And because deer don't respect property boundaries, our five areas span both public and private land. And so from the Select Board tonight, we'd like to ask for your permission to conduct some of this work on town-owned land and town-managed land. But I do want to note, for any other town residents that might be tuning in, we'll also be reaching out to some private landowners as well about conducting this work on their property. So what we'll be doing is in each area, sorry, excuse me, there's a fly in my face. In each area, we'll be placing motion-detecting wildlife cameras to measure deer visibility and to monitor deer behavior. So these cameras take a photo when activated by large animals like deer, and they'll really help us understand both deer populations, as well as other wildlife populations and potential interactions between both. We understand with the use of cameras, there might be some concerns over privacy and we really want to work with the town and with landowners to ensure that everyone feels comfortable. So for cameras on town-owned land, we plan to coordinate with the appropriate steward when placing cameras, so maybe that's the Conservation Commission or otherwise. And we'll make sure that any cameras are pointed away from buildings and trails. Cameras on private land will coordinate with the landowner to ensure their privacy and comfort with that researched element. And any photos of people that do happen to be taken will be kept confidential and will not be shared with anyone. Photos of wildlife will be shared with the landowner if requested. In terms of a research timeline for this piece of the research, we'd like to place the cameras this summer and then they'll run for about three years. And after placement, a member of the research team will need to stop by around two to four times a year for maintenance, things like replacing the batteries and updating the the memory card, et cetera. Now turning to vegetation. Deer through their diet and browsing patterns can impact the forest in a lot of different ways. So deer consume smaller plants in the forest understory, including saplings, shrubs, and wildflowers, so they can have impacts on forest growth as well as biodiversity. So to understand how deer are impacting the ecosystem in the same sites where we place the cameras, we will conduct vegetation surveys of the plant life growing in that area. So identify and count the number and types of plants and assess any impacts that deer or other activities might have made to those plants. No plants will be cut or collected. This is merely observational data collection. And we plan to conduct these surveys in about a 50-square-foot plot annually, each summer for the duration of the project. And it'll take about one to two hours to complete. So this is a map of open spaces with some potential sampling sites in Carlisle. And each dot is a potential camera site slash vegetation sampling location. And today, we'd like to ask the Select Board for permission to conduct this camera work and the vegetation surveys on town-owned and town-managed land. That's those spaces in green. And then I think there's some other properties under different conservation restrictions. And as I mentioned, we'll be conducting sampling on both public and private property. So right now, I'm just showing open space properties, but I do have a map of all of the sampling sites, if that's requested of the Board. Or if that's requested from the Board. Finally, how we manage deer is both an environmental and a social concern. So we're also interested in understanding how suburban communities respond to changing deer populations and also to changing management practices. So we'll be reaching out to town officials, land managers, residents, and other stakeholders who might have an interest in deer in Carlisle to participate in interviews and focus groups about deer, their concerns about deer, and also their perspectives on what to do about deer. And I really want to note that we are interested in hearing in all perspectives on these topics. In terms of the research timeline for this component, it's a little bit more flexible than some of the other research components. So we are planning to conduct these interviews at the convenience of participants. And in terms of the focus groups, we're thinking that those will likely happen in the fall and those will be with residents. To wrap up, research shows that deer affect forested ecosystems. Yet suburban ecosystems are a mix of human and environmental drivers that make the impacts of deer really complex and really hard to parse out. So our research will contribute to the knowledge about deer populations in the suburbs and their interaction with these other social and environmental factors that I've described. So we'll take our data from our research activity and create models of different population and management scenarios at the local and regional levels to understand how this system works. So what are the possible scenarios that arise when municipalities are trying to figure out what to do about deer? From this, we'll provide town officials, residents, and land managers with the data and the findings from these efforts to assist in any decision-making. So we can provide data on what we see deer doing, their impacts on vegetation, the ranges of, the range of experiences and goals of residents and other actors on different elements of uncertainty and conflict, on the different scenarios and different outcomes of our models. However, I want to be really clear that our goal with this research is not to predict future deer populations or to propose specific solutions for the towns that participate in this research. We really want to understand the sort of range of possible outcomes and then provide information to, for you to discuss and explore options as a town. And additionally, while we do have constraints on what we're able to do in terms of research funding and research time, we have some flexibility. So if there are certain questions that are of interest to the town that are not covered by what I've talked about before, we're really interested in talking and thinking through options for collaboration and answering not just our own research questions, but some questions that the town might be thinking about, some town concerns as well. Right, so with that, I will wrap up. If you'd like any more information about your, our project, feel free to visit our website. And if you would like to contact any member of the research team, can shoot me an email, which is here, and I'd be happy to direct you to the right person. And so thank you again for your attention and for inviting us here.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Are there questions from the Board?
I have one. So you have already identified the sites that you want to look at in town. Okay.
Yeah, I can go back to the map.
Yeah, okay. Um, and when you're talking about studying the vegetation and you said you had 50, you know, would be a 50-square-foot plot. Are you planning on fencing that plot? I mean, do you have a control plot so that you can actually tell what the difference is?
Right, for that question, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, who's our deer ecologist, and he's on the line, so I'll let him answer that.
Hi. Yes, we were not going to fence off any plots. The method we're using kind of uses twig ages or ages of species that are kind of a moderate preference for deer. So they don't always eat them, but they'll eat them if, if there's a lot of deer around and if there isn't much food. And using a moderate, moderate preference browse species, we can kind of get like, we can backdate the, the browse pressure and see what the browse was in the, in the past and kind of with this next three years of proposed sampling, we can kind of see what it is in the current time. And that way, we don't have to fence anything off. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. In the past, we have tried to have a deer hunt and there was a great deal of opposition. And one of the incentives for having, allowing the deer hunt was because of the browsing of the understory. And the point that was made by a lot of the people that were opposed to the deer hunt was that we didn't have any local studies, because we kept on citing non-local studies. And one of the points that they, I would say insisted on and which we would, we said we would be interested in possibly pursuing was they really wanted a control area that would not browse at all to have as, to compare with the rest, because they, you know, I guess they're sort of kind of like from Missouri, they, you know, they see it, they'll believe it. So if there's a real big difference between a goat, you know. Okay, so I'll just leave it at that. So I would be, and I, and I just also, the only other thing I wanted to say is that I had for another project for municipal vulnerabilities, I was in touch with the seventh-grade science teacher who is looking for a, some sort of a hands-on project for his kids. And so I would like to throw out there that I'd love to put you in touch, you know, if we go ahead with this, to put you in touch with these kids and the science teacher, because I think they would be very interested in having a hands-on research project that if they weren't totally involved, at least it could, that they would be educated about and informed about so that they could watch the progress of that.
You may have already answered this question a bit, but the, to what degree will the data provide local versus wide-area averages? Is, or I can, I can ask the other half of my question as too. Is there a hypothesis in this study or are you open-ended on it?
Tim, would you like to answer that, or should I?
Sure. Hey, folks. Tim Van Dealen here. I'm a professor in the Department of Forest and Wildlife Ecology at the University of Wisconsin. The hypothesis really has to do with the bigger picture about how does, what's the interplay between the social drivers and the biological drivers of a deer population? How much does it depend on the management? And how does the vegetation and the deer population information feed back into the management? So broadly, these are questions about whether or not the system is regulated from the bottom up versus the top down. In other words, is it the productivity of the vegetation that determines deer population trend? And then the management follows that? Or does the management, does it start with the management? And then that determines the deer population trend, which in turn determines the impacts on the plants? So as Jamie mentioned, what we're trying to do here is to take advantage of sampling across a broad spatial scale that includes very deliberately a gradient of towns that are more rural versus towns that are more urban and suburban, because the human footprint is very important in determining the system. So rather than a study design where you have a control where there's no deer browsing, which in an eastern forest would be an unnatural situation, in any event, we're trying to estimate how browsing and the management response varies across the gradient of deer impacts. So your question about whether or not there's going to be local information, yes, indeed. Each, Jamie has come up with a sampling design where he starts by picking cells within a town that are Where he starts by picking cells within a town that are designed to maximize. Variation in human footprint and vegetation types across the town. And then he's got replicated plots within those cells. So you'll get a picture of how browsing intensity and deer population estimates. Might vary across your town, but then because we're doing the larger sampling across the region, you'll be able to see how your town. Compares to other towns that cross this gradient from more rural to more urban suburban. So the, the design really is the interplay of the local versus the regional.
Thank you. Doc, yeah, David?
Yeah, so very interesting, Professor Van Dealen. So let me, let me try to unpack what I think I heard. The, you, you kind of mentioned two things which are related but not the same thing, if I understood it. One is whether. Not in sort of response to Kate's point. If vegeta, does vegetation drive deer behavior or does deer behavior drive vegetation? That's a separate, separate but related thing to. Some kind of urban suburban trend about how deer behave and how they interact with their environment. You know, in more densely and less densely populated areas. So I, I don't quite have an understanding of how those two pieces fit together, but be, before you comment on that. It seems very dependent on samples, sample location. So you're going to pick, you know, some number of fifty by fifty plots here in Carlisle and elsewhere. Where you pick them, how you pick them, like I, I'm interested in what prior information you use to derive that. And, you know, kind of what the signal versus noise is on that, because there's got to be a lot of variability. About where you pick. And the, and the one comment I will make for Carlisle. I would say is because we have a history of sort of starting and stopping deer hunting, which is another thing we will touch on. Bow hunting. I think the hunters, the group of hunters have a pretty good understanding of where the deer go. It might be useful for you to tap that knowledge when you're setting the location of these fifty by fifties. So with that, let me turn it back to you. You're on mute, Professor Vin.
So the sampling frame starts with the town and Jamie has come up with. Sort of a prior analysis of each individual town, which requires breaking the town into cells. That are roughly the size of a female deer home range. And we do that so that we can achieve independence within that sampling frame. So that you incredibly argue that you don't have spillover in terms of the deer population from one cell to the next. Then we sat down and looked at the literature and we asked ourselves, what are the landscape level drivers, the habitat drivers of deer population trend? And those are things like the human footprint, the different forest cover types, the mix of forest versus agriculture. Even road densities. And we, we use a technique that's called a principal components analysis, which is a data reduction technique. So imagine you put all these potential drivers into. Just a big cloud of data. And then the questions you ask is how can you organize that data? Into linear combinations. So essentially regression equations. That maximize your ability to measure the variation in the total sample. And typically that results in two or three or four equations. That incorporate the information that you've put into the model. And so what Jamie then does. Is he tries to go back and select cells that maximize the variation. The idea here is we're going to, we're going to cover as much. Variation as we can within the cells within a town. So that's how we get to the cells. Then within each cell, we select systematically. Jamie, is it five sampling plots or six? He's nodding. I think it's five sampling plots. That gives us the replication within a cell. So the, I mean, we're, we're sort of deliberately starting out by doing some analysis. At the town level so that we can class it, so that we can cover the variation available in a town. Does that help?
Ah, wow, you're challenging me at seven thirty on, on statistics, but I would say. You have a town and in Carlos's case, a lot of open space. I think, again, what I'm hearing is that a female deer has a certain range and maybe. Other deer stay out of that range. I'm not really clear on that, but, but there's a range. And so you kind of pick an area that. A typical female would roam and you want some variation and then you analyze sort of what the characteristics and then you. I've kind of lost it at that point, but I guess let me step away from that and say. Let me, let me flip it a different way. So you, Sarah asked like, well, what does Carlisle want? And the, the, the debate that has been particularly emotional is kind of. Can, I will encapsulate it and Barney, please correct me if I misstated, but. Can we affect the deer population at the margins? We know we have lots of deer and we have deer ticks and they eat our roads and all that stuff. Okay, we got that. But at the margins, can we? Do something to reduce the population. To Sarah's opening point. The overpopulation, you know, is in part due, of course, to the decline of the predator species like the coyotes who stay away. And so the deer who are pretty benign and we like them, we leave them alone, they proliferate. So, you know, that's probably pretty well understood. But to the point where maybe there's too many deer. So what are our choices? I mean, one is to, I mean, the first thing is assess, I think where you're at is, you know, assess what is the impact of too many deer. And then can we, then where we're at is can we do something at the margin to affect that? So the, the emotional debate that I've observed is first of all, questioning the first premise. You know, do we have too many deer? And the second premise, do too many deer cause damage? And then if you get some consensus, then you say, well, is there anything we can do about that? And one possible solution is you have a very limited deer hunt with bow and arrow in certain areas. And then the question is, well, okay, try that. Does that work? Like, do we even know that that works? And, and we don't know those answers. So there's a lot of, yeah. So anything that helps us get like more clarity around those points. I think is valuable, but I, I just want to kind of bring that into this discussion to say. In your methodology, which I have to admit, I didn't quite follow. Do you feel like you're going to get a good understanding of? How many deer and the effect of the deer on the. Say to Kate's point, the understory, you know, the underbrush and all that. I mean, that's kind of where I would want to be sort of focused, because I know those are the questions that. People will want to know to take the deer hunting debate to the next level and hopefully a more quantitative and less emotional.
Right, so. I'm pretty confident we'll be able to tie. Deer occupancy to vegetation impacts. And we're also on the deer ecology side of this, getting at. A piece of the management concerns that you're concerned about, because deer hunters are going to go to places. That are open, that are forested, that they have access. And they're going to avoid places where there's high road densities and high housing densities. Because in many cases, they can't hunt there. So, so part of the variation in the management response to deer populations. Is embedded in those landscape measurements that we're putting into. The model that we use to choose a study site. And I would have to invite. Anne and John to weigh in on the survey research, the human dimensions research, research that's going to probe. The, the management side of this. What's been tried? What, what do the local folks? Know about. You know, what the history has been on deer management. And I mean, the whole point of the research and the reason that. That we're bringing together the human dimension, the biological dimension and the modeling. Is to try and make those connections that you were describing. Build that into a computer model and then try out different scenarios to see if that informs what future decisions might be. And at this point, I think Anne or John could weigh in on some of the human dimensions part of it.
Sure, I'm Anne Schor. I'm an associate professor at Boston University and I work on environmental policy. And understanding decision-making from landowners to towns these days. And so our questions are really about how and why do certain towns decide to actively manage their deer? And other towns decide not to. And so as part of our efforts to understand the ways that. As you said, these are often contentious processes and you've seen it unfold in your own town, the conflict and controversy. And the different ideas that people have about what constitutes a need for management. And what constitutes a problem and what appropriate solutions are. And also how you understand them and how you understand data and how you understand uncertainty. And so for us, when we think about the circumstances in Carlisle. It's an exciting opportunity to think about, well, what happens when we can add a different type of data to the conversation? Is that, is that type of information able to create more opportunities for collaboration? Is that, does that create an option and the possibility for people to come together and talk about what their concerns are? What their ideas are for what we want the forest to look like or what you want the forest to look like really. And what you want the deer population to look like and then to come together to think about what solutions are. And so that's part of the, you know, building focus groups to understand different residents' concerns. Taking the time to go through and review some of the history of the controversy. Reading through the documents, looking at some of the past town meetings to understand what concerns people have brought up and how that's played out. And then talking with you all about what you'd like to see in the future and how you're, how you can think about using the data that we can collect together.
And Anne, just a quick follow-up on that. Do you, do you, with the focus groups and the interviews that. Sarah talked about at the beginning as part of this process and those happening, starting in the fall. Do you then stick with that same, those same individuals or those same focus groups through the three years? And just continue the dialogue conversations as you provide more information or sort of how, how does that work a little bit?
That's a, a great question and actually something that we don't have a clear answer for. The, the, the way that your process is unfolding is actually a little unexpected. So when we started our research and we. Wrote the proposal to the National Science Foundation, you all had an established deer hunt. And we thought that we would use, we thought that we would use Carlisle as a case of a community that had an established deer hunt that was relatively young. And so as your circumstances have changed, we've started to talk about how we can change our study design. But we haven't finalized that. And so I think we'll think about what are the questions that you all have? How is the process unfolding and what really makes sense? Going forward to, to build a helpful dialogue.
And sort of along those same lines, but maybe broader is. So the, the data that you're collecting over time and then the modeling that you're describing, is that something that. Where you, you are able to start sharing some of the results sooner than the completion of the full three years? Or is it something where it really has to carry through the full three years before you're able to provide that kind of. You know, data and analysis and modeling?
So I think, and, and Tim and Jamie, you can correct me if I say this wrong, but I think that our goal would be to, to share some of the data. As we collect it in a form that we can report back to you. And then Ally can talk a little bit about the modeling efforts if people have questions about that. But what she'll be doing is taking information that we're collecting on the ground about deer vegetation dynamics, but also. So information that we're collecting about hunter behaviors, resident concerns, access. And she'll be building a model that integrates the social and ecological dynamics surrounding deer populations. And she'll be looking at that at the town level, but also creating a coarser, more rough model of what happens at management. At more of a regional scale and the ways that towns' decisions may impact each other. Or questions about scenarios related to that. That decision modeling tool management. Model won't be available for a little bit of time. Because she'll be building on the data that we collect over time to really create something that makes sense.
Yeah, so let me jump back in. I, I mean, I applaud that. I think that's really kind of where I was going. So there's an intersection of scientific and behavioral, well, it's all scientific, but there's an. Intersection of sort of natural biological information. Or, you know, conclusions drawn and, and behavioral science. You're a social scientist, right, Anne? So. As I said earlier, I think it'd be very helpful since, I mean, I, you know, you know all this, I'm sure, but you know, Carlisle is kind of a data-driven town. It's populated with a lot of professionals who. Were in various sciences, law, engineering, whatever. And, and so, you know, people generally are. Able to accept relatively complex data, you know, sets and, and kind of draw their own conclusions. So as I said earlier, one of the things we suffered from is really incoherent. Just data on, you know, are there too many deer and what is the effect of too many deer? So, so that's useful anyway. And then this whole social science response. And this gets to what do we value? You know, what does a person value more? Do they value? The knowledge that we're sort of controlling. What if uncontrolled is sort of a pest? I mean, that's a, not a great way to say it, but you know, some, any uncontrolled. Part is not helpful to the environment or is it the peace of mind of walking around knowing, there's nobody out there with a bow and arrow? I mean, that, that turned out to be a very emotional thing and, and whether it's logical or not is kind of not relevant. It was a very strong, you know, response. So if you can model that intersection, I mean, that's really something. That, that's quite something. The other, you know, and, and we do, again, being sort of data-driven, we like. Comparables here. So the, to the degree that. Other towns, I mean, you maybe put us in the bucket of having a, a sort of a deer management plan and now we don't have a deer management plan. So maybe there's other towns that still do have a deer management plan, because that, that really would be, you know, useful to us. So from my view, you're approaching it, you know, the right way. And what I'm articulating is, is a very intertwined. Model, I guess, from the natural science data and the social science.
Yeah, and the slide that Sarah just put up shows the study towns that we'll be focusing on within Massachusetts. And so closest to Carlisle will also be looking at Weston and Lincoln. So Lincoln has no deer management plan. Weston has, as I'm sure you're aware of, a very long history of active management of their deer. In the. South of Boston will be looking at Sharon and Easton. Easton has no town bylaws that restrict hunting. And so there's a, a different level of hunting access. And Sharon has some bylaws, but also has some municipal properties open. And Sarah, Emily, you can correct me if I just misspoke on that one. And then further out, Townsend sort of sits and we might actually shift over to Pepperell. But they shift on, or they sit on this line where the suburbs are sort of shifting out, 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 out. In terms of what the landscape looks like. And so they're starting to see growing deer populations, but also have more rural circumstances with respect to, to deer hunting and deer acts. And access to land for hunting purposes. We'll also have a, a set of study towns in New York and the management circumstances and tools that are available to suburban and urban communities. Are much broader in New York than they are in Massachusetts. And so that will provide different information about different management scenarios.
You know, we won't have any deer hunting on public lands, but we have always had deer hunting on private lands. And the last couple of years where we did have the deer hunting on public lands, the deer. Called on the private lands far outnumbered the deer called on our private lands. So I don't know. So I don't know how much, you know, our, our management thing is, you know, been impacted by our not having, you know, hunting on our public lands, but we're still hunting.
And I don't know if you've looked at it, but there's a, just a wealth of information on the town website under the deer control committee.
Oh, yeah, we, we've documented a lot of stuff.
Yeah. And actually on the call here tonight is a member of town's a very active bowhunter who was part of the deer control committee and also an active hunter himself. Anyway, I'm sure there's lots of people would be happy to talk with you on all sides.
Any other questions? I apologize for us losing your, one of your control groups, but but it should, I think you kept some left, so that's good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm jockeying on the deer control committee.
Go ahead, John.
Seeing that the research that you've already done is really amazing. But the, the one question I have for you is, is there anything that would preclude us instituting a deer control program while your study's going on? Or, or does the study kind of like say, oh, just, just wait and you can talk about having a deer control plan afterwards?
No, we will follow your bliss.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
We, we can build that into the analytical models.
I have a question, just sort of what do you need from us to move forward? I mean, I'll just, for, for myself, I think this would be hugely helpful.
I do too.
And would be a great reset, research effort that, you know, I would support. And so my question is just what, you know, what would you need from us? Both just in addition to just permission, but sort of what, what, what kind of you need an individual that you're, is your kind of interface person or you, you know, how do you see the, the in the, the setting up interviews and focus groups and also being out in various parts of Carlisle? How you see all that playing out and, and what you would want from us in terms of communication, coordination, you know, that kind of thing?
Jamie, I'll let you and Sarah answer that question.
Sure. I mean, I can go first. As far as access, as soon as it provided that this is a good thing to go or like that is good to go. All like, all I need is access that I can be out there in the next couple of weeks. And then if you need, if you have any concerns about places where I might putting a camera might, might not be the best idea. It would be a good thing for me to have somebody to have as a contact. And then some sort of endorsement for contacting landowners like your, your, so that we can say the town of Carlisle is kind of behind this research. But other than that, there's nothing on the ecological end that I can think of at the moment.
Yeah. In terms of the social science side of things and thinking through interviews and whatnot, we'd love to be able to talk with folks that were involved in some of the discussions, sort of both presently about deer management, but also in the past. So current town officials, but also former town officials. And I, one of our methods will probably be snowball sampling. So we'll talk to someone and then ask if they have any recommendations for other people to talk to. So I think it will kind of unfold organically. Once we start thinking through the focus groups, which we haven't fully planned out yet, we might ask for some advice on places to post information about those focus groups for recruiting residents to be a part of that. But yeah, more information coming on that soon.
Well, I think, I think it would be very helpful for you to have a, a contact person, which tends to be more efficient than committees. And so we can certainly designate that person. If, if we and I'm looking at the, who's here and they're, the head nods, it looks like we're probably consensus appears to be to go forward with this thing. We can take a formal vote, but that's, that appears to be a pretty good consensus on that. But, and again, then the devil's in the details. And, but I think certainly you, you need somebody that you can talk to directly, who can then knows the ropes of the town to help you get whatever you need there. Clearly there will be some resources that are necessary, but more importantly, I need the support and, and the ability to overcome barriers as they arise. So we will find, we will get you a name and who that should be. And let me look, and let me just ask the board if you're prepared at this point to show consensus that this is, this is something that we want to do. Are you prepared to do that tonight?
I am.
Then the answer is yes. Okay. I hear, I have, I have four eyes. And therefore the answer is yes, you do have permission to, to go ahead. And now all we have to do is map out the plan and we'll, and we'll be in business. So it. Other suggestions on who that person should be?
Barney?
Yeah, Barney's been doing it up till now. Yeah. At least preliminary.
David, I'll trade you. You can take the recycle, the transfer station. And I'll be, I could be the point person on this. No, maybe we should just discuss that offline.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just, I'm just thinking some, you know, again, I'm not, this would not be a permanent appointment tonight, Barney.
Then I'd be happy to be.
I think the guy who's not here gets the assignment.
Yeah, well, that may well be, but, but we'll, but in the meantime, let's, let's, let's have you be the contact person.
That's fine.
Until we find somebody who's, who we feel more formally, we can more formally designate.
Yeah. And, and Sarah, I know you and I had been in touch via email, but I don't know if it's Jamie that wants to be the contact for us, but you, you could just write me since you have my email if you want and let me know how you want to do that. I do have one other suggestion. And then also Alan, I noticed that Christina has her hand up, but let me just make one other or more, just a comment, which is, given that we're a small town and we also have, we have a wonderful weekly paper called The Mosquito. I think that the other thing that would be great to do is to maybe take a, a short part of your PowerPoint, Sarah, or if you guys have a short paragraph that you prefer we use to have our local paper run something about joining this study. And, and also give just a quick idea of, of, not that I think Jamie, they, very many people would actually see you, but you know, just, I have to say, we have a town that's very alert and observant. So, you know, be good to just say there'll be somebody from the research team, you know, doing X, Y, and Z. So I, I think that'd be a good thing to do. And then also if, if you want something formal from the select board that you actually have in your hand, that you're, when you're talking to landowners, we could also provide that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Quick, quick consensus of the board, should we, to allow questions from the, from the floor? Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Christina, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm going to try not to trip over my words and try to ask my question as concisely as possible. Will some of your research show whether longer hunting programs have actually been successful at reducing deer populations? Because killing a few deer is not the same as controlling deer population. And I know like Weston has had a long hunting program, but they haven't actually, in all the data that is available to the public anyways, they haven't been able to show that in fact they've managed to control deer populations. Their, their most criteria for most of the regional deer control programs is, well, some deer were killed and people were not hurt doing so. And so I'm wondering if the scope of your study will also include sort of evidence whether these programs are actually working to reduce deer populations and not just, and also having an effect on the understory, a positive effect on the understory as opposed to just, oh, X number of deer were killed. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
And I'll, I'll ask, I'll have Jeannie, if you go ahead and ask your question, then they can answer both at the same time.
Okay. My question is more of a, well, I have one very short question and I guess I was concerned about having only browse studies. There's a lot of ways determining whether or not certain understory exists in a location or not, including history. But the comment I wanted to make is that the select board is right now, more than less of the select board members are very pro deer hunt. And there was originally going to be a deer hunt this 2021 season. And what happened is a large number of town members came to the select board meeting and expressed their concern and that they really didn't want to have a hunt. And so if there is one person chosen to interact rather than some kind of a committee, my concern is that there will be a pro-hunt bias in the representation to the BU and the other university groups. And I, I, I think that's all basically I wanted to say is that possibility of a, of a bias. So thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, the, 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 the person appointed for this is just a contact person, Jeannie, that, that they, they aren't going to participate in the research design. Let's, that's up to the professionals.
Yeah, I can speak to that concern a little bit. Our goal is really to understand the range of perspectives across the town. And so we would be completely remiss if we didn't talk to people that oppose the hunt. And we have taken the time to review the town meetings in the past. And so we have a sense of who some of the people are that frequently spoke up at the towns and will be actively reaching out. And so one of the things that you can do to help us with some of that work is if you want to share contact information with Sarah, that's one way that it makes it a little bit easier for, for us to get in touch with you to start. But we absolutely want to, to avoid that circumstance that you're concerned about. I'm glad you brought that up. And then Tim, I want to let you answer the other question.
Are you sure? Control of a deer population is a really hard thing to deal with. The, the deer managers across the Northeast are convinced that the deer population is kept in check at some level by the degree of hunting. But the relationship between the length of hunting season and the number of deer removed and how that influences a deer population is very complex. And part of the reason we're doing this study is to try and understand some of the complexity, particularly the complexity that happens at the local scale, which would be a complexity that state-level managers typically don't understand because they don't have a measurement for it. So in trying to answer your question directly, will we be able to measure control? There likely is not a threshold between control and non-control. It's different amounts of control. And ideally by marrying the biological research with the sociological research, we'll be able to say something about how different management approaches or management histories affects deer population size. Well, I shouldn't even say size, but, but deer population activity, that's really what we're measuring with the cameras. We have the ability to measure variation and activity through time, both on the short term and the long term relative to deer life history. But we want to be able to relate different management histories at the town level to impacts on deer. And then understanding that to see if there are impacts on the plants as well. So it's, it's a little bit of a non-answer, but that's part of the reason that we're doing the research is the, the key motivation is to try and tie local management approaches, local management history to what we think we can measure efficiently in terms of deer behavior. And then again, what we think we can measure efficiently in terms of the impact on the vegetation.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Hearing none, I want to thank, oh, go ahead.
Can I? I mean, caveat on that, I guess it just seems, Tim, that there's like, there's an awful lot of variables to, for the data size, the data set size, at least in Massachusetts. Because again, from the Carlisle perspective, because we don't really know, we don't even know whether, you know, at what level too many deer begin to harm the understory in a way that really degrades that natural environment. And we have extremely limited, to Christina's point and how the people made it, extremely limited data on the efficacy of a, of a controlled kill. To the point where I think that's almost not useful because we only, I mean, one of the criticisms, again, from the social science perspective is we did all this stuff and, and then we killed two or four deer or some number of deer. It was a very small number of deer. And, and so despite, you know, if you just set aside your Bambi feelings and all that and just say, we went to a lot of effort to eradicate four deer. Is that enough? I mean, we don't even know like how many deer we have. So it just seems that we're starting from so little knowledge about this and maybe you have more from your comparables. But that would be, I guess, as a closing remark, what we would be, what I would be interested in is really as much research across the widest swath that you have to give us guidance about the parameters of the problem. And then it's icing on the cake to me if you got any insight about Carlisle. Cause I just don't feel, I, I just caution us not to have false expectations that just because, you know, we got a lot of great academics doing a study that we're going to learn things. It's just, there's so much variability and such a limited data set and that, and I'm not a statistician, but I know enough to know that that's like a problem. So that's sort of my closing warning, I guess.
Yeah. And if I may, your comments are spot on and it's exactly what we've been struggling with in the study design. And it's probably the fact that we've taken a new approach to this that enabled NSF to fund us in the first place. So the design issue that I described early, earlier is an attempt to deal with specifically that level of variation that, that you're worried about and that frankly, I'm worried about as well. Taking advantage of the fact that we've got this gradient of ecological conditions from urban suburban Boston to central New York allows us to, at the very least, place Carlisle in a regional context with respect to, to deer biology. And then Jamie is also using techniques that are emerging in the Northeast as kind of standard techniques for what a botanist would call a quick and dirty assessment of deer impacts. And what that gives you is local measurements that you can compare to an emerging and wider literature on northeastern forests. So minimally, if we are absolutely hamstrung by the variation that you're describing, we can at least give you some descriptive statistics about how Carlisle compares to New England more generally.
Okay, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. I yield the balance of my time, Mr. Jim.
Any further comments, questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to Kate's, something that you said really early on about liaising with some of the science teachers and just let you know that we would be very happy and interested in making those connections and building that.
That would be great. I'd be happy to be the point person on, on liaising for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would, I would include the high school because some of this is fairly sophisticated, interesting stuff for the high school.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you to the research team. Look forward to seeing your work and even your results. So that's, that's terrific. Thank you so much for being here this evening and we look forward to an interesting three years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
I'm hoping that at least going forward.
I'm hoping that at least going forward, we will have more informed conversations than we've been having in the past.
And if, if nothing else, you've provided us one of the more interesting discussions that we have had in the, in the select board meetings. We normally don't get to talk about fun stuff like this. Thank you. All right, Carlisle Energy Task Force. I saw Bob Zog here. I assume you're the person, Bob.
I am. Thank you very much, Bob Zog of the Energy Task Force. I'd also like to introduce a couple of people from Amoresco, Ryan Fahey and Lu- Louis Allegria, who are joining us tonight as well. So I will share my.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for your time. Thank you very much.
So we're going to talk about our solar canopies and electric vehicle charging station, give a status update and mention a couple of decisions we need to make and a couple of items that, that are in play and give you a progress update. This is really a summary of what I'm hoping we can get to tonight. First is really applies to both the canopies and the chargers. We're going to, the Energy Task Force would like to recommend that the Select Board contact our electric representatives to talk about some of the delays that we attribute to Eversource. And I'll get into that a bit more. We, Amoresco would like to seek your approval tonight for trenching across Church Street to allow interconnection of the EV charging station. This is a new location from the location you previously authorized, so it needs, needs your approval again. Like to just reinforce some of the implications of owning charging stations and the commitments that we've made under the Eversource EV Make Ready program. And one of those implications that we, we will need to appoint a network manager for Carlisle to basically oversee the charging stations. I'll give a progress update on pricing strategy. Again, that's work in progress. So just a reminder, we've got five canopies in place at the Carlisle Public Schools parking area. Over on the east side is the original location. We were planning to put the EV charging station, but for reasons I'm getting into, we had to move that to the west side over here where we have six slots and three charging stations planned. Also, there is a conduit in place underneath the parking area to, for future expansion of the EV charging station to include chargers under this array number five, should we get to the point we'd like to expand the, the charging station. This is a partial timeline for the solar canopies project. And I'm going through this to illustrate some of the points, some of the concerns we've had about Eversource. There was quite a bit before we got to the town meeting in 2019, but I omitted that for brevity. And of course, the array was approved at that town meeting. And we went through a procurement process to secure Amoresco, signed a lease and a power purchase agreement in August, so things were underway. And then in 2020, late May, started construction, completed construction of the array, paved the parking lot. And by late September, all that was finished. And then we waited. So Eversource was insisting on conducting a witness test, which is their prerogative. That was not scheduled until February and it turns out that they were did not have the right equipment to conduct that test in February, so that was indefinitely postponed. And then, just in the past week, Eversource decided that they would waive the need for a witness test. So that had, there was no need for that to delay progress to that point.
What is the witness test, Bob?
I'll let Amoresco speak to that.
Sure, this is Ryan Fahey. Nice to speak with you all. The witness test is where the utility comes out and the system is interconnected to the grid. And utility is there to witness that the, that the system operates as it's intended into its specifications before allowing the system to operate freely and interact with the grid.
Thank you.
And there's still a few things that Eversource in conjunction with Verizon needs to handle. The poles along Church Street, some of the utility poles need to be replaced and they actually are owned by Verizon. And of course, Eversource needs to connect us to the grid. So I won't go through every point on this slide, but let me just refresh our memories on revenues here. The canopies will result in almost 34,000 per year in revenue for Carlisle for a period of 20 years. That's a combination of the lease agreement and this payment in lieu of taxes or pilot. Those payments do not start until panels operate commercially, so they, that those payments have not started yet. I also wanted to remind everyone that we can recover some legal expenses incurred in getting the pilot agreement in place if we wish to. Also remind people that Amoresco retains the environmental attributes associated with the electricity generated. We will get credits on some of our utility bills, some of the town's utility bills. And Amoresco will invoice us for the electricity and the amount of those credits. So we, well, there'd be no net cost or net revenue. It's just a convenient mechanism to take the incentives that come to Carlisle and deliver them to Amoresco for our agreement. I've talked about the delays a bit in some of these points. I just want to briefly mention some safety and aesthetics issues that really don't involve the Energy Task Force, but just for completeness. I think you're all aware that there were some safety issues associated with ICE. And there's also some aesthetics, potentially with screening some mechanical equipment and potentially planting some trees to offset those that were cut down to facilitate the canopies. So that's where we are in the canopies. Moving on to the EV chargers. In 2018, Energy Task Force applied for Green Communities Grant to cover the cost of one electric vehicle charging station, dual-port electric vehicle charging station. We had the understanding that we could put this charging station at the library. That was awarded in July. We spent quite a bit of time discussing it with the library board trustees, but eventually they declined to have the installation at the library. And so we spent considerable time finding another location. And a year or so after award, we got to the point where the school committee agreed to have the station at the school. And we were ready to apply for the, the Eversource EV Make Ready program, which really provides the bulk of the cost, which is interconnecting the stations to the grid. So the charging stations are cheap relative to the cost of connecting to the grid. And the Select Board did, as I mentioned earlier, approve trenching that would accommodate installation of the charging station at the east end of the lot. And we signed a site host agreement with Eversource in November 2019. So in early January, I don't know the exact date of 2020, Eversource revised their plans for interconnecting to the grid. And those resulted in the need to move the charging station from the east side to the west side of the parking area. And we got approval again from the school committee to do that. It also became clear that we were not going to accomplish the installation of the charging station in time for the Green Communities Grant, even though we had extended that grant by a year. So Jonathan DeCock, who was involved on behalf of the Energy Task Force at the time, worked with Amoresco and reached an agreement that Amoresco would arrange for the installation of not just one, but actually three electric vehicle chargers. So that was good. Just about the time construction was starting on the canopies, Eversource decided to change the interconnection plans again, which basically meant that we didn't have to move the charging stations in the first place. But at this point, we were committed to the new location and we've taken a lot of time to, and money to switch back. So we proceeded and got things in place as best we could at the same time that the canopies were completed in September. So 2021, March of 2021, Eversource under EV Make Ready Program, Eversource approves the project finally. That's 18 months after our application and 13 months after Amoresco submitted their revised plan with the three chargers at the west end. There's still a need for the utility pole replacement that I mentioned earlier. Amoresco again is going to ask permission to trench at the new location across Church Street. And there's still a need to connect to the grid. Amoresco has placed an order for the charging stations. Once Eversource approved the project, they went ahead with that. And those will probably be a two-month delivery, but that is unlikely to be a gating item. So really, I think you've heard this before, but this is really summarizing a lot of the issues associated with Eversource. This is not unique to Carlisle. Unfortunately, this is something that we've heard is happening in many communities in Massachusetts who've been working with Eversource. So that's the reason for suggesting we, we write a letter. So here's a snapshot of the EV charging stations as they sit today. And basically it's just some bollards here in front of some cones that are positioned where the charging stations will go. This equipment in the back is mostly associated with the canopy. And most of these points have covered already or will cover, so I won't touch them too much other than to mention again, the recommendation for a letter that the Energy Task Force is happy to draft on behalf of the Select Board if you would like us to do that. So let's go over some of the implications of owning charging stations. First, there's the site host agreement that we've signed with Eversource, which we've committed to operate and maintain the charging stations for at least five years from the date that they're put into service. In terms of operation, the good news is that the network service fees are covered for the first five years as part of the purchase of the station that's included. As I mentioned, we'll have to establish a, a network manager who will be the vendor point of contact, will program the portal that the charging station uses and monitor and evaluate data. And we will have access to a lot of data. And of course, the Energy Task Force will help with interpreting data. From an accounting perspective, the charging stations will be on a single meter, their own separate meter, separate from the school, separate from any other town meter. So we will have a new electric bill that we will be responsible for. And we will need to set up an account to which the vendor will, after they've processed payments and taken their processing fee, will deposit money based on the fees we charge at the charging station. Hopefully, there won't be too much need for maintenance. It's really just simple cleaning and inspecting and reporting problems to the vendor. But our warranty only covers parts for the first year. So any service beyond parts for the first year is at the town's expense. So let's talk about the trenching here. This is a diagram from Amoresco. The charging stations are down at the bottom here. This conduit in here is in place already. So there's conduit under the entrance to the parking area to this handhole at the corner of Church Street. That's in place already. And Amoresco is seeking your approval to trench across Church Street. May not go in a straight line. It may be more of a diagonal line here, depending on how Amoresco decides to do that. And this is a utility pole where the transformer will be mounted and the interconnection to the grid will take place. So that's the reason for this, this trench across Church Street. And this gives some photographs. The charging station is up here. This trench, excuse me, conduit's in place underneath all the way to this handhole. And the part that needs to be completed is connecting from this handhole all to this utility pole on the opposite side of Church Street. That's a general location, the trenching. I'll share one more slide on this and give Amoresco a chance to elaborate on this because it is their request. This is a map of the historic district and it really, I can't judge whether any part of this trenching operation is in the historic district or not. This photograph shows this house, 109, 109 Church Street is right there, so it's pretty close. It might not be in the historic district. Even if it is, it's unclear to me whether Historical Commission needs to approve this. So let me pause there for a minute and let Ryan or Louis chime in and add anything I missed or correct anything that's incorrect.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Bob. I, I think you, you captured where, where we are and how we got here very well. But regarding the trenching, I, I think we are looking for some guidance from the Select Board, whether we can operate under our current site plan approval that's related to the canopy and perhaps amend that, or if there is a preference for a new filing to be made specific to this work. We are agnostic, you know, as far as the approach, but, but just looking for some guidance as to the Select Board's preference.
Well, we don't do site plan approval. That's planning board.
When you say under the current approval, was that something you went through the planning board for?
Yes, it is. So we've done communities in the past that prefer all cuts that go through a public right-of-way to be at 90 degrees. I think that's sort of represented in the diagram that, that Bob had up on the previous slide. There are some advantages to going diagonally from the handhole there to directly to the pole. Does the Select Board have any preference related to, you know, how we get from the handhole to the pole?
Could we see that previous picture again where the?
Which picture, Kate? Oh, the historic district?
Yeah, yeah, that one. Do we see the pole in this picture?
Pole is off to the right here.
It's off to the right. We do see the handhole. And there's no sidewalk or anything over there, but there is quite a bit of vegetation that would be disturbed, it looks like, along the side of the road.
To do, to do the diagonal?
Yeah.
Here's the picture that includes the pole.
Yeah. And it also looks like something's trenched already in there. Is that just beyond that rock? I see there's a, excuse me, a, a dry, you know, you can see a grate. And then they see the rock and then it looks like, looks like they were trenching in that road there already, no? Again, go back to the other picture and you, I think you see it better in the other picture. Yeah, I see that seam, isn't it?
I'm not sure what that is.
I don't believe that's related to our work. Our work went right up to this handhole. I don't believe that's related to our work. Our work went right up to this handhole. But no further onto the street.
Yeah. But you might have to be careful about whatever is in there.
It could be. You can see that there is a storm grate right here. Similarly, there is some kind of a storm drain that goes across the street in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
Another advantage of perhaps doing it diagonally, given how close it is to the historic district. If we were to make the ninety-degree cuts that were shown in the previous diagram, I think we're getting closer, if not finally entering, the historic district. Doing the diagonal cut, we're heading away from it immediately in reducing the risk of you know, falling within it.
Yeah. Have you talked to Gary Davis about what he might prefer since he's the one that takes care of the roads? And do we, we have any? Yeah. And I'm just wondering if we have any policy about work in the roads.
Well, we, we went through this, this conversation and did approve the trenching across the road when it was in the other location.
Yeah, but it wasn't diagonal.
That was a right angle, yeah.
No, no, I know it was, but I'm just saying in terms of the select board, we don't really have the the knowledge, I would say, to, you know, determine what, sort of what might be affected going diagonally versus right angles. So I, sorry, so it does need to be, I guess, considered by some other people. Like the Gary Davis at the DPW and I would also think the planning board.
At the very least, we need to know whether we have any policy on it.
I'm reading, I'm reading. It's twenty-six, it's section twenty-six in our policy handbook.
While Kate's looking, do you have any thoughts on this, Tim?
Well, I would say if there's an amendment to the site plan, that's definitely planning board. If we're gonna enter, the board's gonna entertain a new street opening permit, that's strictly the board's. I take a new application's preferable to an amended one, you know, where it's a different location. We just asked them to submit a new application and to sort of rescind that previous approval.
Okay, thank you.
And Tim, that would be a new application to the planning board. Correct?
If it's for a site, if it's for an amended site plan, that's a process that the planning board handles. They call it an amended site plan application. I think if it's gonna come just to this board, you'd want a new street opening application from Ameresco.
Oh, I see. So they don't have to go to the planning board if they want to just come to the select board?
I think it doesn't sound like they're changing their site plan to me, and they might want to get an advisory from the planning board and might want to do it soon if they're going to, but yeah, I think for the select board's purposes, I think, you know, the street opening permit is sufficient.
Okay.
And you do want to get Gary's, Gary's input on that.
I would definitely get Gary's. There's no specific thing about, you know, ninety degrees. We're more, frankly, we're more concerned about, you know, getting everything patched correctly so that we don't, you know, have a
And it looks like it was less disruptive to the environment, was a diagonal.
It would be, and I'm concerned about all that vegetation along the side, edge of the road and
Might as well go right, be easy to go right to the pole. All you're doing is digging up asphalt.
Yeah, and then there's the crosswalk. Oh, yeah, well, that's different. Okay. There's the crosswalk to the, to the library just beyond that pole, right?
Right in here.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not impinging on any of that. Okay. Okay. I think, I think whether it's diagonal or not should be left to Gary. Personally.
So it sounds, it sounds like, Ryan, perhaps you should work with Tim to get that new application in place. And Tim can put you in touch with Gary to talk about, get his feedback and maybe that's, is that the best way to proceed?
I would also say in terms of historic districts, closing, to put in new material in there. It's not like where with the rotary and there was different materials that could have been used. This is just a cut in the road and it's gonna be put, you know, back with the humanists. So I don't think even if it were in the historic district, that they would have much jurisdiction over this.
Yeah, it's not like you're gonna put in cobblestones.
You're right. So I don't think that would be necessary. I think more importantly, and I don't think, I agree with Tim. I don't think you're changing the site plan. That, I mean, honestly, when you move the the location of the chargers, you must have already put in a new site plan application or amendment in there for that, no? Okay, so since this is just a matter of trenching, it's not a matter of changing anything on the site plan. So I don't think that's, that's necessary.
So, Tim, I'll work with you to be put in touch with Gary Davis to start that conversation about the diagonal versus the ninety-degree cut.
Yes.
Yeah, the diagonal, I mean, honestly, if that became more difficult for Gary to maintain in the future because it's a diagonal instead of a, you know, thing, that would be the only thing that would weigh me to say, wow, no, we better have it ninety degrees because it's gonna be a lot of extra maintenance over the years or whatever, you know?
Okay, are we, are we set now on the, on the trenching?
Yep.
Excellent. So this is largely a progress update. I do want to communicate some of the challenges in setting pricing for the charging stations. So the current guidance we're operating under is that we should target our fees in such a way that we reach breakeven on average. You know, some months we may be up, some months we may be down. Which sounds a lot simpler than it is. Now that is the current guidance. That's the guidance we're operating under at the Energy Task Force. But if the select board certainly could change that guidance at your discretion, if you wanted to encourage EV use, certainly that would be your prerogative. So, you know, we're looking into how we can target breakeven pricing. We need to discuss how we handle temporary shortfalls if we happen to underpredict cost versus revenues. We may have a temporary shortfall. We don't know whether that's best handled by a revolving fund or some other mechanism. So we'd be looking for some guidance on that. We can mechanically, we can adjust pricing anytime we want. It's, it's very easy to do through the through the network and through the portal that the charging stations are connected to. But we probably want to adopt some type of a policy and how often we're going to do that, so don't create confusion. And we will, go ahead.
Will these be managed by, you know, one of the large EV station companies or?
These are managed by ChargePoint.
ChargePoint, okay. Yeah, thank you.
And there's also a local company working affiliated with ChargePoint called Voltrup who does sales and service and customer support as well. So both ChargePoint and Voltrup are available to assist us.
Thank you.
Some of the considerations we want to look at is we certainly want to set charging pricing and policies that are convenient. We have the option to give, we have the technology available to give discounts to town staff or to town residents or both. The select, excuse me, the Energy Task Force is recommending that we use the Carlisle's optional one hundred green product. This is the Massachusetts Class One Rex, hundred percent Massachusetts Class One Rex product that we offer through our community choice aggregation. And certainly we could advertise this as green charging for electric vehicles. Now, another little complication, Voltrup informs us that communities are not happy with some of the pricing structures that EV charging stations are dealing with. And the Department of Public Utilities is apparently directed EverSource to revisit its charging station rates. We have no idea how long that might take, but the rates I'm going to show you are subject to change sometime in the future. And they might get a little less onerous. Longer term, in five years, who knows? A lot of things are gonna change, but five years down the road, we will have the added cost of the network service fee should we continue to operate these stations. So we did a little survey of charging station fees. I've only included here charging stations that municipally own buildings, just to simplify things. Generally, the range is twelve to thirty-two cents a kilowatt hour and the center of gravity is more in the eighteen to twenty-one cent range. So what's it gonna cost this for electricity? And this is where it starts to get a bit complicated, so bear with me. We've already talked about the supply side with the supply pricing. We're recommending the optional green product, which is thirteen point nine cents a kilowatt hour. And that's two and a half cents above the default standard product price. The delivery pricing, that's where EverSource gets involved. EverSource tells us that we'll be required to use their B2 general rate structure as a monthly charge of eighteen dollars. Energy charges vary summer to winter, and they also have three tiers of pricing depending on the volume purchased. But that's a secondary factor. The big factor here is the demand charge and really what a demand charge is is not only are we being charged for the quantity of electricity, but we're also going to be charged for the maximum throughput. The rate at which that electricity is delivered over a thirty-minute period and the maximum thirty-minute period in the entire billing month is what drives this demand charge. So anytime we're over ten kilowatt in the winter, we'll pay about twenty-one dollars per kilowatt or the kilowatts over ten. Summertime that goes up to over fifty dollars a kilowatt. This has a big impact on what we pay on average for the electricity. And I'll show you a chart in just a minute. ChargePoint also charges a ten percent processing fee for all the transactions which we've added in. And just to give you an idea, that the theoretical maximum demand with the three charging stations, if all six ports were putting out as much electricity as they could would be about forty-three kilowatt. So we'll talk about that more in a second. And again, we haven't factored in any network service fees because the first five years, we, those are already prepaid. Here, I've shown some example costs per kilowatt hour, average cost based on a few assumptions about the charging patterns at the stations. And the red lines represent summertime prices, June to September. The blue lines represents October to May prices. And this range here is the twelve to thirty-two cents that I mentioned earlier. That's typical of other towns. And what this chart basically shows, if we limit the demand, which we can do, we can control the peak demand. That's good. The charging stations have the, have the flexibility to do that. We're limited to ten. We're in the competitive range. If we go to even twelve or fourteen, the average costs of electricity go way up. The basic conclusion is if we want to achieve competitive breakeven pricing in operation here, we need to cap charging rates to a total of ten kilowatt.
Sorry, Bob, to interrupt, but I just want to understand something. So when you say ten kilowatt, capping it, does that mean per, per usage of a charger or over, or total usage of a charger over a certain period of time? What, what does that mean exactly?
So this means limiting the rate at which we can deliver electricity. So this is, this is a flow rate of electricity, if you will.
And the, the cap would mean so, so that would mean that, you know, over a certain period of time, if you had five cars go plug into the charger, you might exceed your, somebody may end up not being able to charge because we've reached our cap?
Well, what would happen is it would, we would slow down the charging rate allowed, so they would, we would not exceed the cap. So the vehicles would charge a lot more slowly than they might otherwise charge and might make people unhappy.
Right.
The charging rate that the charging stations are capable of.
Right.
This ten kilowatt limit really means that we're, we're using only twenty-three percent of the charging capacity that could be delivered from these stations.
Right.
Now, there's different, you know, we can, we don't have to divide this evenly among the three stations, but it is a, it is a quandary until the rate structures change. And if we want to break even and we want to be somewhat competitive, this is just the reality. It is unfortunate.
Is that rate per station or for all three?
Unfortunately, it's total for all three. The whole mess, so that's why it's only twenty-three percent of the total.
Very small fuse in your, in your breaker. Barney, your car can charge at eight or twelve kilowatts. If you just plugged it into the wall, you can either get eight or twelve kilowatt hours out of it. So that means that you'd never be able to charge it at full. So which, so if you were to drive it down there, it would take you longer to charge it there than at home where you can use your twelve.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And, and that means also if somebody is driving to school to work and counting on being able to get a full charge, you know, and then drive back home, they could be up a creek.
Well, in four hours at eight kilowatts, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you don't get very many miles out of that.
Right.
Get a full charge. If they weren't coming, let's say forty miles, they'd never be able to pop it up or sixty miles. I'm thinking of a Volt, it has a sixty-mile range. They would not be able to fill it up in four hours at eight kilowatt hour.
Kilowatts, not hours.
Yeah.
But again, there may be some smart things, we can, intelligent things we can do to prioritize one station over another. So we don't know how many people will be plugged in at any one time. A lot of variables. Jonathan had done a quick survey of the parking lot some time ago and found four electric or plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. We don't even know if all four of those would be using the charging station or not. So there's a lot of unknowns. We'll have to see what happens, but this is sort of the, unfortunately, the quandary we have until rate structures change.
Well, it's good data to have.
It's, I would think that there'll be some pressure on EverSource to change this with more, you know, with what's going on federally, you know, nationally and by state. Hopefully, they'll be a little more, I mean, they, they're, they're cutting their own noses to spite their face in a way. They can't, they're, they're limiting their chance to sell electricity, which seems stupid to me, but what can I say?
And apparently that pressures has come to play according to Voltrup because they, they say the DPU has already told them you need to relook at your rate structures. Now, again, we don't know how long it's gonna take. We don't know what they're gonna look like eventually. But there's some hope there and Voltrup just recommends that we do what we can, limp along for now, and then when those rate structures change, we can, we can do something a little bit better, make full use of the charging stations. That's really all I had. This is just a summary of this slide I started with. And I guess the, you know, question, maybe the one question we didn't answer is whether the Select Board would like to sign a letter that the Energy Task Force drafts to our electric representatives about some of our experience with EverSource.
I certainly would favor that. I mean, this is, this is going on and on. Those canopies have been sitting there now a long time without any generating electricity.
I can tell you that our, our elected representatives are already aware of the problem. So I do think it would be helpful, though, to have a letter, you know, just for them to have a letter from us. In fact, they, yeah, they asked us.
They, they appreciate the support.
Yeah. And it's helpful to have concrete, you know, a letter from specific places, yeah.
So if you would, did you, did you volunteer to have the, the task force would generate the letter for our signature?
Yes, the Energy Task Force will generate a draft for your review and signature.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work, Bob. You've done a the almost job on this stuff, and it's got to be very frustrating for you, I know, but we do appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this, and hopefully we get those cells turned on and get some charging stations going as well.
We need to thank, thank Amoresco as well.
Amoresco, yep, yep.
Working on it.
And by the way, we are going to hold our town meeting under the canopy again.
Let's not forget the, you know, I only picked up on this within the last several months, and there's a, I won't even attempt to mention all the people who brought this over the years forward, so it's been a, been a long haul for both the chargers and the canopies.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
All right, on to the discussion of Curved Street Dam. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Open, open space plan. David.
Thank you. The plan has been, as I said in my note to you, the plan's been approved by DCS, and they are the only ones that can or need to approve a plan, but they require supporting review letters from Regional Planning Agency, and we already have that from MAPC, the Select Board and the Planning Board, and the committee also has traditionally gotten support letters from CONSCOM and RECTCOM. Planning Board provided their approval or their endorsement of the plan and approved the letter last night. That's why I'm here with you is to have the Select Board's letter. I sent you a copy of the letter that was provided by the Selectmen in 2013. I can go through some quick points about the plan, or given your timeframe and that you're running late, you can ask me questions or move to approve a letter, whatever you would like.
Well, let me first accept a motion and second, and then we can discuss it.
So I move that we write a letter of support for the 2021 Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Anyone have any questions?
I read the plan. I thought it was good. It's already been approved.
And a lot of work went into that, so thank you, David, and your group. Yeah, it was well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Odell, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We will write your letter.
Great. Look forward to getting it, because I, I do need to get these letters to DCS to, to then be able to go and actually print copies and have it be done, done, done. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now we go to the Curved Street Dam. Sylvia. Sylvia Willard?
Yes. And, and Ken Belitz is here as well.
Welcome, Ken.
Hi, Ken. So we were asked to be available for you to answer any questions you might have regarding the Curved Street Dam. During the fall, and it went, it underwent one of its five-year inspections as required by the Office of Dam Safety. I this is the third one that I'm aware of that's been held, and the third one that I've been on as, as just walking along with the engineer that did the visual inspection. You have any specific questions or?
Well, it looked like the the three evaluations over the three times it's been done are relatively similar, but it looks like they are recommending some work to be done. And is, is, is that the recommendation?
Right, the, the, the actual condition of the dam remained fair during the whole time. The the condition has deteriorated a little bit, and they do have some recommendations that if the town determines that they would like it to remain a dam, they have recommendations that need to be done, like removing the trees along the sides of the dam and in, I think about 20 feet in from the, the bottom of the bank that behind the dam. And repairing the toe of the slope where the stream that comes, that eventually goes through the culvert under Curved Street is cutting into the bank of the dam. I would think that would be something that the town would want to fix anyway, because that undermines Curved Street over time. And then there's the, the cranberry flumes are what makes Curved Street Dam a dam. And that's, they need some work and repair as well. And that is something that I think the Cranberry Bog Working Committee Rookin Group and the Conservation Commission are working on what the plans are for the Cranberry Bog as we move forward. And it, whether or not we want to keep those flumes or not. Ken, do you want to have any, you have any comments on that? You're muted. You're muted.
Thanks, Sylvia. The only comment I would add is that no plans are firm, and maintaining the status quo, which includes keeping the dam option open, is important at this time.
So the CONSCOM and the Cranberry Bog Working Group are supporting the recommended maintenance, if you will. It's described.
And with that said, you know, we still have an agricultural exemption. And so the state's regulatory reach is limited so long as the bog is in agricultural use. But at some point, that, that agricultural use will likely come to a close. So we're in a transition period.
They do consider this dam a significant hazard dam. They, the town did try to get that changed oh, I think around 2010, and the Office of Dam Safety declined that request. However, if the town, if, after all the work that is done by the Cranberry Bog Working Group and the CONSCOM in deciding what to do with the future of the dam and that it should no longer be a dam, then there is a formal procedure that the town would need to go through in order to declassify the dam. And basically, right now, it's not functioning as a dam until you put boards in. So to go through the process of declassifying it, need to apply to that and then remove the ability for the, the flumes to be blocked. You know, the flumes to be blocked by boards.
So there are no real, I mean, there are no environmental concerns on that in terms of suddenly the flow increases dramatically or anything like that, or simply not blocking it off anymore?
Right, it just flows as it, as water will. It was there, the, the cranberry pollutants were put there in order to be able to flood the whole bog for cranberry harvest.
Right.
And they replaced antique wooden ones. So at least they're metal. We do have another bog. I mean, we have another dam out there as well that's regulated by the Office of Dam Safety. And that's the dam that has the trail on it, and it's parallel with Curved Street and perpendicular to Martin Street. And there's a couple of cranberry flumes in that as well. And there's, will be an order to inspect that dam in five years. That, that is a low hazard dam. And the Office of Dam Safety has that dam on a 10-year schedule instead of a five-year schedule, which is what Curved Street Dam is. That, that dam is in poor condition.
So I had a couple of questions. Sylvia, one thing you did not pick up in the rec, you know, your summary was the recommendation that I saw in these, or the statement in the executive summary. There's also no emergency action plan for Curved Street Dam, which is requirement for all significant hazard potential dams under the Department of Conservation and Recreation's jurisdiction. Does that cost money, or do we have plans to have this planned?
That's probably the same as, as it has been right along. It is I believe I mentioned that somewhere in my summary as well, number a number four on the front page of the memo I put together.
Okay. I didn't know.
The, it, it, to keep it as a dam.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
So.
So we would need, it, it recommends a detailed TOPO study. I had, I mean, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis and emergency action plan and a formal operation and maintenance.
Okay, so are you planning on doing that? That will will I take it?
I I, I think it would be a, a good idea to wait until the Cranberry Bog Working Group and the Commission make their final determination on that. Would, it hasn't been discussed, but it would be wise to wait. It would conceivably cost a fair bit of money to do that. We did the H&amp;H study and got an operation and maintenance plan and some detailed plans for the Greeno Dam 20 years ago, and that one, that was then was around $15,000. So it's, it's not a small amount of money to do that. We want to do it after we make a final decision on where it's going to go.
So are we, what do we need to do tonight? Anything?
I, I was asked to come and discuss the dam.
All right.
It was a, I
I, I guess.
Every five years. And we got another five years to go before we'll get another another request to
I guess, are there, are there, are there plans to do the maintenance?
Uh, we, there hasn't really been a discussion about this at this point.
Okay.
But is, are you thinking it should be, I mean, are you recommending Sylvia to, with the CONSCOM or or that and the Cranberry Working Group that the, the three things you list in your summary should be done?
The chair can put this on the agenda at the next meeting.
Yep. I think that we, we're working with a consultant to come up with an overall plan for an alternative when the cranberry bogs no longer considered a cranberry bog. Once the agricultural activity ceases, then there's a new set of rules that we all have to operate under. And we went through with this inspection in order to keep our options open.
Right.
And the maintenance required to keep it as a dam will be factored in along with all the other maintenance activities that we might incur once agriculture is no longer in place.
And what about the, the recommendation about Curved Street itself and the yeah, I think that's number two in your memo, Sylvia, if I remember correctly. That, that's the one that weird, let's see.
The, who's maintaining it?
Cutting of the upstream slope near the toe. Filling in graders as necessary and providing protective armoring to prevent recurrence.
Oh, you're talking about undermining the toe of the slope by, on the edges of Curved Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think that that's something
Number two, which I know maybe that's more of a DPW issue since it's really affecting Curved Street, the, the street.
That's something that I think should be looked at whether or not we keep it as a dam. I mean, that's, that affects Curved Street.
So just jump ahead a little bit. If we were to solder up the grooves in which the wood boards get placed along with some engineering studies, then the dam can be called decommissioned.
Right.
And then it buzz, does become a Department of Public Works issue because Curved Street's important.
Can you Ken, on that, I mean, that's really the biggest question that I have is if we were, if we were to de, what's the, what's the lowest cost path to safety? Is it
We don't yet, we don't yet know that, so if I'm not mistaken, it was about $5,000 to conduct this study?
Something like that.
Whereas decommissioning the dam would cost more than that.
Well, I actually talked to the Office of Dam Safety about what the process would be if we were to decommission the dam, and I talked with Paul Marinelli, and he said, if the time, if the town decides to go this route, which would be to decommission the dam, then I would suggest you submit a new hazard classification application via your engineer to the Office of Dam Safety, indicating that the flashboards and slots are removed along with photos and an explanation that the remaining culverts will not impound water and any other reasons to change the hazard classification of your dam.
Right, and, and to do all that was comparable, if not more money than the study that was just completed.
Right, but that, the study cost, but
Right, so, so that process, so you're, you're right in the sense that preserving curved streets is important.
Right, but let me maybe ask it a different way. The, 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 the cost of doing the bullet points one through four or whatever is three to $400,000, right? The ones through three. Is that true?
That's what they're saying, yeah.
Right, so if we were to keep it as a dam, three to $400,000, plus maybe some other but from what Ken's saying, I, I just want to make sure I'm, my understanding's correct. Decommissioning and the cost of figuring it out and doing it and da, 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 da is more in the 10,000, 20,000 range? So, and, and I presume from your comments that the Cranberry Bog Commission understands that, and the economics of that are part of their calculus about their recommendations, right?
Yes.
Right, so, and, and the timeframe for them to reach a conclusion is when?
We were hoping to have a plan in place already. So we have a consultant who Who is still working on. What set of actions would be proposed to the state? Under a notification of intent. And we're trying to keep those costs quite reasonable.
But, but, but you're giving me sort of regulatory things that.
I think it's a matter of months before we have. A concrete plan from our consultant. So that we can then approach the, the board, you know, the select board, the planning board. With what this would cost, then we can go to the state asking for approval of a management plan.
So is, is there any chance that one of the recommendations will be to? Continue to harvest cranberries and therefore need a dam, no?
No, there, there's. Basically, there's no way to harvest cranberries. Cranberry market has so changed that Mark Duffy cannot raise cranberries.
That's my impression, so then there's essentially zero chance to need the dam as a dam. Right?
Unless our consultant tells us there's some benefit to having that dam as part of. The overall management plan. The, the main goal for the Cranberry Bog Working Group is to maintain the openness of that landscape.
Yeah.
Of all the things that people value, they value the open space.
Right, but I mean, okay.
As opposed, if you just let it go, it will turn to farms at over some length of time.
It'll turn to what?
With forests.
But. It reminds me, I mean, it's like saying we should preserve non-native species because they're pretty, really isn't the prevailing.
There is an argument to let it go to forest, but there is an absence of open space. And there are ecosystems supported in that current space that would disappear.
Okay, so there is, so there's a non-zero chance that there is a recommendation that we need a functioning dam. And therefore we're.
There is a slim possibility that we need a functioning dam.
Okay, so until we, so there's no point, it sounds, alright, so that's helpful, I didn't appreciate that. That we should not be making a decision now, but there will be. So there will be a, we better understand, I guess, the financial impact if the recommendation is to. Continue a functioning dam. So that's a hurdle that when that consultant makes a recommendation to us, we will try to remember. You will remind us that there's a three or four hundred thousand dollar price tag with that decision.
Right, and the Cranberry Bog Working Group is trying to keep the costs consistent with what they are currently. Which is in that kind of ten to fifteen thousand dollar per year range.
And then at that point, based on those things, we can make the action plan, whether it's DPW or. Whatever, okay, so I think, I just, last question is for me is, um, didn't we do, I read that report. Last year, right, didn't, I don't remember the context under which we read it, but didn't it come up to us?
It was a, there was a, uh, draft report that, um, came through in the fall.
Yeah.
Uh, which I read through and then got back, and the, the final report came in, um, this. Um, during the winter, early spring.
It, it, I didn't go back to look, but it, my recollection is substantially similar.
Yes.
And, and I also recall that Luke made a mention, because it was, it was somewhat in the context of the Greenow Dam. Which obviously is a dam and, you know, has a lot of other issues. And Luke made a remark. And I'm gonna probably mess it up, but it was roughly to the effect that we had a better chance of getting state money. To fix this one. Again, assuming it's a dam, because if it is a dam and it breaks. It takes out a road versus Greenow where it's just inconveniences hikers and things.
Well, it, it's, well, the Greenow has some fairly significant environmental.
And I support the Greenow Dam repair, but his remark was like, he could possibly get some state money here, is that?
I, I, I don't know, um, you know, it, it is conceivable that, um. If they came out and took a look at it, they would. They wouldn't think that this was as high priority as say a dam that, um. A public water supply, for example.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks.
There's no urgency at this point, I don't think, to, um, worry about three to four hundred thousand dollars for a repair. On this until the commission, the, the Cranberry Bog Working Group and the Commission are done, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much, uh. I don't think there's, is there, there's no action item necessary here. Okay, well, we appreciate it, thank you, we look forward to, uh, several months when your consultant reports and. We have something else to do.
Thank you, and thank you for getting us back on schedule.
Alright, now the fun part. Uh, town meeting preparations. Uh, we have a list of warrants, what we have to do tonight is decide whether we support, don't support. And who's going to talk on them if we, if, if anybody. I did, uh, we did hear this morning in the FIN team meeting that, uh, FINCOM is going to meet, I think, tomorrow night. And make their recommendations on what they'll support and what they won't, there were a couple of things that they still were undecided on. But, uh, that shouldn't affect us here. So let's, uh, shall we start with the consent agenda?
I move that we support the consent agenda.
Second.
Formally vote on each one?
Yeah, I think so.
We do.
Yep, okay, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye. Thank you, and that probably doesn't require anyone to speak, FINCOM will do that for us, yeah. Town clerk salary adjustment.
I move that we, um, adopt or approve the Article 10.
Do you hear a second? No second?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, alright, any discussion?
Is it that it seems like too big a raise?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, I mean, the justification is, is that comps were considered, and this is in the middle of the comps.
Yeah, yeah, well, this, well.
And I think the summary really captures what's.
Yeah, I mean, it explains why it's, it's low. In that it was not subject to the normal raises that other town employees got over the years. Uh, and, in the, because it's not a contractual obligation. Uh, but at some point, uh, it becomes, uh, somewhat untenable. Uh, in asking somebody to work well below what other.
No, but they.
Paying their town clerks. There would, I mean, there was a question at one point about the workload, but I think that's been answered.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just the oddball thing, it's an elected position, it's like you. Not only were you hired, but you actually had to want to run for office knowing what the salary was.
Yep.
You know. That's the part I guess I have a little bit of issue with, is, is, it's one thing to say. As we do in most organizations, you know, we have employees that have been here a while, they. Don't, you know, on their own have, the leverage that an employee has typically to. Um, get more money, let's say, if they, if that person feels he or she is not fairly compensated is. A, look for another job, or B, you know, jawbone your boss. Or C, maybe the more proactive, which is what we did here, is the organization itself should take on to benchmark. And adjust those people to market. But an elected official, I mean, they ran for office. Knowing what the salary was. I guess that's, and that's my issue, I don't, I think she's worth seventy-five, it's just. We are in an aura, we have to underst, we have to consider what, you know, people, what the, um, optics are of the decisions we make.
And part of my, you know, hesitation is, when she brought us, uh, her comparables. It wasn't anywhere near this, she wasn't. Um, she, of course, I, it was hard to kind of look at it, and I, but I remember doing a spreadsheet and. We weren't going to be near that, and the other thing is that we are having a governance committee. Uh, that's going to be looking at various positions and, um. I wonder if this is going to skew their work at all.
Skew in what way?
Well, it's in any, either way, influence, um. You know, this, well, I mean, part of the, part of the justification, of course, of having this not be an elected position is that. Fact that it is at such a high salary, uh, all our, none of our other elected physicians have any salary attached to it. Um. Except, you know, stipend of a hundred dollars here and fifty dollars there. Um, so it really makes that elected.
So, so let me ask you this, I'm, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, so. If, if it was a, a point, if it was a, you know, regular salary, so it was in this. Article whatever, where you've got the steps and grades. It would be a, I'm looking at the chart here, it would be somewhere in the grade eight, it would be a grade eight position. And grade eight. Comparable grade eights are the COA Social Services Manager, that's the only. Below, the COA Director, Planning Board Administrator, Conservation Administrator, whom we just heard from. So, I mean, from a small E equity standpoint. One could say, gee, the town clerk's as important as those people, right?
And police officers.
Well, that's, yeah, that's yet another thing, and teachers, I know, I get it, so I guess. I don't know, I mean, I, I, I guess I would support it, I feel like we should support it. I think to not support it is kind of bad faith at this point, but I, I just sort of registering a little bit of. Negative reaction to the way. Not, certainly not blaming the town clerk.
No, i- yeah, is that, I, I think I'm with you, I, I feel like. Somehow we missed discussing this, and it appeared, um, kind of more full-blown before we really had a chance to. To talk about it, and it, it, it's not a personal, this is absolutely not to do with personality. Has to do with the idea of, you know, the position and, um, how it's treated in town. Um, so I'm, I, yeah, I, I'm with you on that, and, you know, anyway.
Okay, I'm done, I'm ready.
Alright. Uh, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you. And I guess, uh, I can speak to it. When, at town meeting, based on the summary that's contained in the, in the warrant. I don't, Article 11.
Just, on that note, I mean, is it more appropriate for Tim to speak to it? Or is that?
It could, yeah, I mean, this would. We, we think this normally when we say, does the board support this?
Right.
Yeah, so you're, you're speaking as the board, not the process, okay, fair enough, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Okay, uh, fiscal 2021 budget transfers.
I move to support Article 11.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, oh, not all in favor, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Twenty percent more efficient now that Luke's not here.
Only now this.
I don't think that requires much discussion unless somebody from the floor asks for it.
And that's not us anyway. Talks about that.
Yep, okay. Uh, fiscal 2022 operating budget.
Move approval of fiscal twenty twenty.
Okay, roll call vote.
Any discussion? Go for it, Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Reed, aye.
That's, that's as much discussion as it'll get at a town meeting too, they passed this thirty-two million dollar piece with generally, in about four seconds.
Yeah. Move approval of Article thirteen, special appropriations.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Reed, aye.
Thank you. Fourteen, capital equipment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Finance, finance.
Finance Committee will speak to it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Oh, then what were you asking, sorry, then?
Is there anything we have to change because of the issues around the roll-off truck? Or we're, we're just?
No, that's gonna be a, I, I don't think so, it's just a free cash.
That could be, that can be in the motion. There, there was an issue, uh, with making the money available prior to July one, which we can accomplish by. Making the, uh, the vote effective in fiscal twenty-one. So that it, it becomes effective June seventh instead of July first, because. Specifically Gary is in desperate need of a new roll-off truck, so he's got money he can purchase if he can get the funds.
Yeah, the dumpsters are getting full down there today.
Yeah, I, I mean, he's had the guts filled on that thing in his, his workshop, and we. Actually, municipal facilities wasn't able to put the new heater, heating vents up in there because he. Couldn't move the truck out of the repair bay, and it's been going on for months, so this is, it's not, he needs a new truck.
Okay.
So will that, if, but if we do buy it prior to the, end of the fiscal year, would we take this off, this motion, Tim?
No, no, you, you, it, it would simply, uh. You'd want to vote that whole article, the, effective immediately, so that it, it becomes a fiscal twenty-one.
Ah, okay.
Rather than, so it needs to, to be there, but we need to vote it so that we can access the funds right away.
Got it. Yeah, okay, the Finance Committee will be speaking to that, so. You know.
Yeah.
We need to vote.
Yes. Roll call.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Reed, aye.
Thank you. Municipal facilities.
Move approval of Article fifteen.
Second.
Or support or whatever you call it.
Yeah. Discussion?
Finance should speak to it.
I, I think maybe Jerry might speak, I don't know, Jerry Lerman might, if he's asked to, but, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Uh, alright, I had Kate's name on that, but I won't have you on it anymore. Okay, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you. CPI recommendation, CPA recommendations.
Well, we can't really vote on this, can we, if we don't know what they are?
Good question, and, and Luke is not here.
Nope.
When, when will they be, when will those, when will those, uh, uh, recommendations be available?
They, they should be available later this week, Luke's working with town council on them.
Well, are we, I guess it's in the report, are we having a pre-meeting in town meeting?
Think we almost always have to have that little fifteen minute meeting.
I think that's a good.
Probably a good idea, yeah, I mean, Wayne did ask about that, and I said, I didn't know of anything, but now we do.
Okay.
FINCOM said they would probably have the same thing.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, we should plan on a fifteen minute meeting.
So, who made the motions, we should, are we rescinding the motion for the present time?
We're not making the motion.
We didn't make it, yeah, yeah.
We just made it, didn't we make it?
No, we didn't make the motion on sixteen, support.
Oh, sixteen, we haven't made it.
Yeah. Okay, seventeen, Town Governance Task Force.
Move to approve.
Second, okay.
Any discussion? Roll. Roll call vote.
I'd like Kate to, I'd like Kate to speak to, I propose.
Yeah, I, I, I have Kate down to speak to it.
Alright, Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Reed, aye.
Thank you. Amend the zoning bylaws to change the name in spite of the overwhelming objections and the mosquito. But it, what did he call it? Anyway, never mind.
So I, I make a motion to approve article eighteen.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I. Can we just go back to seventeen? I just want to let you know that it'll probably be me and
Madeline.
Madeline.
Okay.
Presentings. It's, it's going to be a presentation.
Yep. Okay, I need, no discussion on name change. Roll call vote.
No, we did that.
We did that. Okay, who's gonna speak to it? Anybody?
Well, I mean, I could, but I thought.
I, I think it's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Well, if somebody asks a question, we can.
Yeah.
Do it then. Nineteen, personal bylaw, personnel bylaw.
Support the personnel bylaw.
Move to approve, you did, okay, second.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you.
A lot of questions from the mosquito about that one.
Yep.
Are to plan to have a short presentation on this, or?
Again, I think, you know, I don't think Wayne is, is planning any presentations for anything. I think he's just.
No, no visuals.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or explanation, I guess.
Well, you know, there is a summary, I think, pretty good in the thing and if people ask questions, I don't see why we can't just get up and answer them, but I don't think we need to make a presentation.
Well, if there are questions, though, would, would you be the one to answer it, Kate?
I, me and or Barney.
I mean, there's questions, right? You know, the statements we're talking about are to clarify or to, let's say, clarify the, the select board's position on an article, but I think if there's questions, we should defer to experts, and in this case, would it be Tim or would it be Kate? I mean, it seems.
Actually, I, I would say it would be Tom, Tom Harrington, most likely.
Okay.
Right. Wayne, Wayne's gonna look for a select board member to make the motion, and after that, it's kind of up for grabs who answers the questions.
Okay, I'm happy to make the motion.
Yeah, okay.
And is that true with any of these others, Tim? That we haven't already identified, that he's looking to the select board to make the motion?
Yeah, whoever's identified as the presenter makes the motion, and usually they answer questions, but they don't have to. It can be a department head or anyone.
Alan would be making the motion for the town clerk and
Right.
Jerry potentially from municipal facilities, but then Kate, you're saying you and Madeline would do the town government task.
But that's the presentation.
That's the presentation.
If we're gonna make a motion, I mean, Alan should make most of the.
I can make, I can make the motions.
Yeah, there's no point in, there's no point in rotating.
Yeah, I mean, at our last meeting, Wayne made over.
Yeah, he did, yeah.
So it can all be moot, you know?
And he might do it again. But if not, I'll go ahead and do it.
Okay. So.
All right. Article twenty.
Um, wait, number one, I, I move we support.
Second.
Any discussion? All roll call vote.
Is there, is there going to be a presentation by planning board on this one?
Sure there.
There needs to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, required for zoning article.
All right, so that'll, she'll field those questions. So I have no further.
And that's gonna, that's a two-thirds vote, right?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
This, that's where we go from being ahead of schedule to behind schedule.
All right, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you.
All right, I move we support the amendment of the general bylaws for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Any discussion?
Kate, are you presenting?
I will, yes.
I already have her name down. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you.
And is this a, this is a two-thirds because it's a bylaw change or no?
A simple majority.
Simple majority, okay.
Yeah, it's not zoning, yeah.
The only one so far is number twenty.
Right.
Now, the, the select, mend the select board is a zoning bylaw change as well.
So that applies to.
That'll be, yeah, unanimous, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Article twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Ask quickly, article twenty-two, was that the one about money for the study for the public safety?
Yes.
And we've just removed that entirely?
Oh.
Why, why is there nothing in there for twenty-two?
We still had it in there and that we had put it like not to exceed fifteen K.
About changing the language, yeah.
Yeah. What happened?
It's not, it's not in the, your warrant?
Well, it wasn't on the list.
It's not in the packet.
Summary list.
No, it's in the packet. I'm reading from the packet.
Hang on.
Well, it's not in the, it's not in the list.
But is it in the actual warrant? But, you know, summary.
It is, yeah, it's, it's in the warrant, it's in the warrant book.
Here it is, on page sixteen, funding for public safety architectural programming study.
So what, how did the language finally turn out, Kate?
To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to borrow pursuant blah, blah, blah. A sum of money to be expended by the Public Safety Facilities Task Force to engage a consultant to review, assess, and develop recommendations detailing the programmatic specifications and requirements of the Carlisle Fire Police and Dispatch Departments, which shall include but not be limited to potential future facility needs, separate or single building, and use of the current sites or new site or sites, or take any other action in relation thereto.
So does that do what we wanted it to?
I think it covers the ground.
Well, the summary, the summary does. It says it's specifically not the end of the summary. It's intent, intently not to request to fund the design of a new building, but rather, you know, determine, so I think it's fine.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, there's no, there's no dollar amount specified.
Yeah, I thought we had, when we had discussed it, I thought we were putting a cap on it.
I thought so too, but.
I did too.
So what happens when people ask, what, how much are you putting aside or whatever?
Right. That would be, that would be in the motion, right, a cap?
That would be in the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could say not to exceed a certain amount.
Yeah, I think people would be much more comfortable.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Knew it wasn't going to be more than fifteen K.
Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna say then? Not to exceed fifteen K?
I, I think that's a reasonable amount.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, because I would only approve, vote for this frankly, if it does have a specific amount with a cap.
Yeah, we don't want a three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so we, we have not yet moved, moved this.
Okay. So.
So twenty-two, we have a, you moved, we have a second.
I, I either move or second, I don't know.
Like, you're moving it because I didn't hear anybody else move it.
Right.
Okay, so I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none?
Hold on one second, I'm just reading this summary and and so it's to study the program requirements of the town's public safety departments and the cost of a potential new public safety building. And then it's intently, it is intently not a request to fund the design of a new public safety building. Rather, it'll assist the newly formed Public Safety Building Committee in determining what such a facility might include and might potentially cost.
There's a typo, there's a typo there, Tim.
Well, it's too late now, right?
Where, where is that, David?
In the last sentence, what such a facility says what.
Right.
Is.
Gotcha. Okay, all right, thanks.
But this, I mean, I guess it's gone to print, right, Tim? So it's too late?
Well, we can change the warrant, but not the.
I, I, this, the summary still makes it clear that the focus is only on a new public safety building.
And it's, and it's also talking about a single building.
Yeah, and, and I thought we expressly said that it needed to be considering all the options.
Well, we should, we should speak to that.
Yeah.
I think my impression is, I mean, the, the summary is not legally binding, it's simply a guide, right, so.
No, no, I know, but it's what people are gonna have in front of them.
Well, then we should say, we should just say, we, you know, it's not quite clearly expressed in the summary, but.
Well, we should just make sure the.
The intention is to give some money to the.
Yeah, I, I, I'm repeating the, the summaries in the motions handout, so there's an opportunity to
Oh, yeah.
Add to or, or correct the summary.
This one, definitely instead of town's public safety departments and the cost of a potential new, should take out the word A, the cost of potential new public safety buildings.
Facilities.
Or facilities.
Call them facilities.
Yes, you know.
Suggesting that you may make, give them a non-building facility like a lean.
That's something with a tent.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, Tim, I'd be happy to work with you on the, this summary language.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and then if we, and I don't know how soon you get that to print. We're not meeting again, or are we? No, we're not meeting again before town meeting.
It's a fifteen minute meeting before town meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, Barney, why don't you do that? Because you're always, yeah.
I, I'm the one that keeps objecting.
You're articulate.
But you, you, and rightfully so, because you're, you're interested that it's in plain English and that people understand what the heck we're trying to get.
Right, we don't want to, we don't, you know, we don't want to rile people up and.
No, no, let's not, let's not create controversy with it, isn't it?
Yeah. All right. So.
Okay.
Put on that? Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So I move that we support article twenty-three, the salary wage table.
No, we gotta vote on.
We gotta vote on twenty-two first. No, we didn't vote on it.
We set up two votes.
Roll call vote.
Okay. So, Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you. Now we can do salary wage table.
All right. I, I, I move we vote to support the salary wage table.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask quickly, why, so no town administrator is listed on it? Did we, did we ask this question before, Tim?
He's contractual.
Yeah, you won't see the fire department.
That's what I forgot, okay.
Yeah.
Contact with, so the DPW Superintendent is not contractual, huh?
Correct.
Thank you. I knew there was a reason, I couldn't remember.
Good. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you. And twenty-four, share of the employee medical insurance premiums.
I move to support twenty-four.
Are you a second?
Right here.
Okay, discussion? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I.
Thank you very much. All right. That pays care of the list.
Okay.
Town administrators report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, I've kind of stuck the cemetery deeds in, in my report to kind of save a little time and space on the agenda. So we've got some deeds for your approval and there's a suggested motion under the cover sheet for agenda item number eight.
Actually, it, it isn't, there isn't, and I tried to draft some motions, but I don't know what the addresses of these people are, so I could do one of them, but the other two should be put off until we get addresses.
Okay, maybe I can give you the addresses.
Well, I looked in the nosy book and they weren't in there, so.
Okay, I'm looking in the phone book.
Well, I do this first one, move approval to convey lots, hundred, one eighty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-five, and one eighty-six graves, one and two, in section D of Green Cemetery to Parkman Howe and Melinda Lindquist of eighty-three Acton Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read, I. And then move approval, I'll try it, but move approval to convey lot three sixty-eight and section D graves, one and two of Green Cemetery to Barry O's of.
Address to be filled in.
Yep.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. Because they have to be Carlisle resident, right? Oh, wait, here. You know what, it wasn't a nosy book, but the Carlisle Community Directory and Resource Guide has got him at twelve eighty-six Curve Street.
I have him at eight forty-nine Curve Street.
That's Madeline O's.
That's Madeline O's, right, okay.
Barry O's is twelve eighty-six Curve Street, if this is correct. And I mean, but this is the, the twenty seventeen community direct, so I'm concerned that he wasn't in the, I could not find him in the nosy book at all, so I'm, you know, I don't know what we.
Look him up on the assessors.
You want to table it till they get the right address?
Why, why don't we table those two? Kelly, I don't know where Kelly is either.
Yep, okay.
Right.
There's a Steven Kelly, but that's the wrong Kelly.
Let's not guess.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
That's all on them, yep.
Okay.
It's a bike ride.
We have a, you'll see attached to the report, a letter from the New England chapter of the National Multiple Scrosis Society requesting permission for a ninth consecutive year for fundraising bike ride on September eighteenth, using Carlisle streets, and they asked the board's permission. They've attached the roadmap for you there as well. I realize, I, I guess I stopped writing halfway through this item. I must have been trying to like get out of town quickly or something, but a motion to approve their request for use of the streets for fundraising bike ride would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Actually, they use very little Carlisle streets, but
Right.
It's a good ride. I, I work it every year as a ham radio operator.
Yeah, it's certainly a good cost, so.
I, I make a motion to approve the request from the National Multiple Scrosis Society to host their ride again in the town of Carlisle on September eighteenth.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I. I keep forgetting I'm next.
What do I?
Read, I.
See what happens if Luke doesn't show up?
Yeah, it's terrible.
All right, acceptance of a gift to the police department.
Yeah.
Where did that come from?
An anonymous gift, I believe.
It was anonymous, yes.
For a new storage shed at the police station.
Wow.
Chief asks you to accept it on behalf of the town.
That's interesting that they tried to give them money before, which he didn't, never cashed a check.
I thought he was getting a new building, I think. Okay. Is there a?
I move, I move to accept with gratitude the anonymous donors.
Yes.
Very much, second.
And a second, thank you. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Read, I.
Thank you. Liaison reports.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that Municipal Facilities Committee has been talking about, you know, various structures or chains of command, if we were to move to a unified municipal facilities management. um, unified, um, municipal facilities management department. Um, and, uh, I know Tim Goddard and, um, Jim O'Shea have been talking about this for the past year quite a bit, and, uh, so we're just, you know, that's been part of our discussions to encourage, um, furthering, you know, further work on this project and trying to see, you know, how, how this could all be made to kind of work structurally and give some. I wouldn't say guidance, just just looking at it and trying to see how we could try to make this work. So. That's our major, that, thank we have moved on recently. We were kind of hopeful that, that some of the ARPA money we could spend on, uh, some of the HVAC issues that we have around town, so, but I'm not sure how much money that's gonna end up being and or, you know.
Yeah, we'll also need to be careful with some of that, because I noticed in one of the recommendations on it, they were talking about, uh, UV air handling treatments, and there's, there's new technology coming out very, very quickly, which will supersede that. And we need to be careful, we don't spend a lot of money for something that's gonna be outmoded in a year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So it's just, if, as I said, it just came up in our discussions, because we have some HVAC things that we have to do anyway. Some of that money.
Well, that certainly is one of the, is, is it, it looks like we, the tent may not be reimbursable.
That's what I heard, yeah. That's the state, the state owes us for that tent.
They do indeed.
Yeah, talk about unfunded mandates, and then, you know.
All right, uh, any other liaison?
Yeah, just quick update on the, um, transfer station, oops, that's our dog deciding to join in, hey, hey. Um, the, uh.
Wake Teddy up.
Yeah.
Teddy isn't running in back.
Anyway, the, the transportation task force, um, Christine Lear kindly, uh, volunteered to help Tim, uh, do a doodle poll and figure out when that group is gonna meet, so that's underway.
I hope that group doesn't become too unwieldy because of its size, but.
Check their guns at the.
It was, I just think it was important for us to have a, a well-rounded group and not
Yep.
Look like we're handpicking people.
Right. And I did send a letter to the editor, uh, requesting volunteers for the, uh, uh, public safety building task force.
Okay.